Scheduled town meeting for Monday, July 8, 2019. Welcome to all that are here tonight. We appreciate you being here. Reverend Duck is going to lead us in prayer and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Mr. Duck, thanks for joining for going in.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Had a good crowd tonight. Good opportunity for the Baptist church to do a little appreciation tonight. But, well, their prayer instead, first prayer. Father, we come before your presence this evening. We thank you for your grace, your goodness to us. Thank you for this day that you provided. We really can't thank you enough for all the great gifts that you supply and put in our path of life every day. I pray that the seat, each seat that's filled on this council tonight, that you'll fill each member with your goodness and your grace, your wisdom. And Lord, that you'll bless them as they lead this town and make decisions that will benefit and bring good to people in this community. Thank you for every blessing again that you have so upon us, God directed this meeting tonight, and may you be honored in everything that's said, done, and accomplished. And we'll say thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name again. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I have Mr. Mayor's comments, and I'm not going to really say anything because we've got a lot ahead of us here. I will say on July 19th, there is going to be an event at the Portland Festival Park. It'll be a movie night presented by the Atmacs County Library. And previous to that, we're, the park is going to have their dedication event. But we'd like the people to come out for the movie event on the 19th if you're available. We have no scheduled public appearances. That takes us to the adoption and consent agenda. And since we have a lot of speakers signed up and a lot of potential speakers, we're going to move the citizen comment period up to ahead of unfinished business so we can allow those who want to speak to do so before we go through the rest of the business. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda? Any additions? Okay, with the movement of the citizen comment period to just before unfinished business, I have a motion of second for adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye. I'll oppose nay. All right, we have obviously a lot of people here that want to speak. There is a three-minute limitation on the time that you speak. We'd like for you to introduce yourself and give us your address. Just for a moment, Mr. John P. Garrett would like to make a couple of comments.
I just want to preface a little bit about this welcome center that I think most of you are here for tonight, and I appreciate all you all coming out. The town of Aphtomatics receives an unsolicited request for funding to help promote tourism, specifically the downtown area. This request was to tap into an increased number of visitors to the national park and the museum seats that downtown does not always attract. The town council is simply weighing all options of this matter and actively promoting downtown area as a whole. The town fully supports downtown revitalization and would in no way intend to have the proposed welcome center take the place of the current downtown visitor center. The priority of this council is to do what's in this community's best interest and to promote a thriving town that prospers. In doing that, it's always important to use the facts regarding the best way to do so rather than to speculate. We too have concerns that must also be addressed and careful thought and consideration must have been given to this matter before any sort of approval. Before any kind of approval action will be taken. I have spoken to many business owners in the downtown community, and I understand and appreciate and respect each one of their concerns. I too have some concerns that I would like to see resolved. I see the good and bad of both sides of this, but ultimately I want only what's best for this entire town. With all this being said, I feel it most appropriate to have further discussion at a later time to talk with stakeholders about this impact that this may have, where pros versus cons may be discussed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, John, if you'd like to back that up to an agreement with that. The first person I have on the list is Beth Turner. Beth, you come over to the mic there and introduce yourself and your address. Thank you.
My address is Beth Turner, 404 Cedar Cove Lane, Baton Springs, Virginia. I am a current business owner on Main Street and have been for probably 27 years or more. My concern is over opening and funding another welcome center in a private business. It is my opinion that if you fund this project, it will no doubt take away from the existing visitor center. What a shame. Bob and I had an agree to disagree discussion. He admitted that his plan was to boost his traffic flow of people and it would help his overall business. Well, how about that? Take away from all of our locally owned businesses on Main Street to fund one private business. I as well, with many others, do not agree with using our local tax dollars to fund his own self-interests. Where is the fairness in that? Yes, I agree the economy has changed and people being so politically correct has changed many views on the past of this country and has a large impact on the history of our country. Consider why you would take away our hometown atmosphere from our visitors. When they stop on Main Street, they can grab a cup of coffee, a hot meal, cash from our local bank, get a haircut, browse through our local shops, get excited from the passing train, and even stroll through the walking tour. As discussed with Mr. Sayer, he promised to send people downtown to the existing visitor center. Well, I explained to him, one stop to get info is all people will make to get the info that they need. No one will come downtown to this visitor center to get any info they acquired at the supposed welcome center. What is the fairness to our tax-failing citizens to support one privately owned business? How will this plan of giving thousands of dollars away affect our revitalization grant? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patina Dunham.
My name's Patina Dunham. I'm Granny Bee's Restaurant. My address is 2026 Y Way Road, Aphtomatics. First of all, we knew nothing about it. I think it was handled the wrong way. I'm getting a little bit more bits and pieces and a little bit more understanding, but how can the town give this kind of money away when we are trying to, in the process of working on a grant? Do you really think this is going to help? I don't think so. Two things I've learned in restaurant business is people, two things they complain about, prices and taxes. That's the first two things they're going to complain about. So I think homework needs to be done, number one. And my personal opinion from Granny Bee's is I don't think we need a welcome center and a visitor center. I just think most people are in a hurry. Today's lifestyle, everybody's in a hurry, they get on their phone. I took notice in the last week, that's what everybody's doing. They're getting on their phone, they're asking you questions, they Googling. That's the first thing they're going to do. I'm just really afraid that if you was to have a welcome center, that it would close the one down. People wouldn't be using that one. They wouldn't have no need to go to that one. But I'm sure that the town council will make the right decision behind all of this to keep the Atmacs historical great like it has always been.
Thank you. I'm not sure about the next name. Is it Lynn Lefur?
I'm going to pass it this time.
Okay. Did I get the name right?
No, Linda.
Linda, okay. You had it separated.
Sam Carter, Thriller Center, Moore's Lane. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Town Staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I became aware of this situation about two weeks ago. That's first I heard of it. I, for one, have always been an advocate, just like you are. I don't think there's nobody in this room that will say that they wish bad things to come forth on the town itself, downtown. Everybody knows that, as Mr. Garrett pointed out. But to me, if you move it, and by the way, a welcome center slash visitor center, to me, is the same thing. It's no different. Just as if you move the existing visitor center to the museum, to me, it's synonymous. I mean synonymous with a bypass. When you put the bypass in, in small communities, what happens? It kind of closes. It goes dead. We've got a prime example 10 miles down the road. Even when we put in our bypass 20-some years ago, it hurt. It hurt the downtown business. Because if you're not directing downtown, people going up to the museum and going to the courthouse, that's where they're going to stay. They're not going to come downtown. And I don't see how anybody really can, cannot see that. I mean, we always tried to make downtown our number one project to grow, to bring income in. So to me, I'm sure that you all know a whole lot more about it than I do. You all got the paperwork, you all got the information. But I'd like to see that visitor center stay intact. Thank you.
My name's Marvin Mitchell. I live at 398 One Lane. And I'm going to look at it a different perspective as just a town resident. I also own a business in town on Main Street. I looked on Google, and we have 7,880 people in town approximately. 1,780.
Okay. I thought you said 7,800.
No. In the county, 15,400. So what they're asking is 11% of the county to finance this welcome center, which I totally disagree with. That is not the right scenario. Well, that's where I'm coming from. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. If anyone didn't sign up or would like to speak, the floor is still open for anybody who would like to.
Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight and to speak to you all again on this topic. And again, this is, began as a discussion for the last couple of years. It's actually an idea that was first presented to Lou Naliskam, when she was director of the museum. I've been at the museum here since it opened in 2012. I work both here and in Richmond as a director of visitor engagement and retail. I'm the front of house at all three sites. So I have a sort of perspective as well, but it's being associated with two different national park sites here and in Richmond, as well as three museum sites, the White House, the Confederacy, that was our site in Richmond, which has a national park next to it at the historic park. The national park here sees about 62,000 visitors a year. As I think somebody mentioned a minute ago, there have been issues, I think somebody used the term political correctness. I would just say it's, we have a very complicated history that gets discussed here and on nationally. That has led to some downturn in visits to historic sites and historic homes. More specifically, recently, Thomas Jefferson's Monticello is one of those places. And they are part of the community. We're part of the community and have been. The national parks numbers are going down. I've noticed that it affects us, it affects the town. And the town's visitor center numbers have basically dropped in half over the last 10 years. We do spend a lot of time on a daily basis directing people to downtown because we're all part of the community at the museum. We all live here. Okay? So I would like to say that first. It's not just me. It's a rising tide. The intent is to have all those rise at the same time, not just me, the whole community. We care very deeply about this community. I had an opportunity to go to Manassas yesterday and went to the welcome center on Route 66. It's funded by the state. I went to the downtown historic visitor center in the town of Manassas at the Train Depot. And I went to the national park that's five miles away on the other side of Route 66. And I talked to them about this idea because they have a visitor center, a welcome center, and a national historic park. They thought it was a wonderful idea, and they've done very well by having all three working together. So that's essentially, we can, we can get more information from them, we can get more information from Virginia Tourism, we can look at other sites in the state where they have a welcome center, a visitor center, and also a national park. So I'm just going to end in saying that we're very supportive of the community. The cost is all specific to this. It's not to bail the museum out, as some folks have said. We still pay 95% of all our expenses. It's a dollar and 50 per person to potentially attract another 7,000, 8,000 visitors of the 50,000 that dump over from the national park to the visitor center. We're underserved, and we have a wonderful downtown. Thank you.
Again, floor is still open if anybody would like to speak.
I'm Don Wilk. I live at 1848 Church Street in downtown Aphtomatics. A little, little unique because I live and work in Aphtomatics, right in the downtown. So I definitely want to see lots of people come to the visitor center downtown and all the fellow merchants, certainly. Without a doubt, I want downtown to thrive. There seems to be a lot of, a lot of things to consider, though. Everybody here, I think, as mentioned, wants the whole area to prosper, everybody to do well. So that's certainly a consideration there. Will it take away from one, one entity from the other? It needs to be seen, I don't know. But my wife and I are still trying to contribute to the, to the, the economy and the community here. We're, you know, we're, we're slow going, but we feel welcome and part of the downtown. So I'm, I like that visitor center. I've heard some good things about it. I've seen, you know, people just come by our building, even though we're not open for regular hours. But I would hate to see that go away. Just, just some of my thoughts, a couple more things. We like the private enterprise doing it too. I don't know how that would, it would work out, but there's, there's merchants who are kind of like their own welcome center. They go to the hotel and they've got all the brochures and things out for all the other businesses in town, and they direct people elsewhere. So certainly, obviously, everybody working together is what we, what we want. However that is best done, I guess that's, that's the question to be answered and determined. So, thank you.
Mr. Reddy?
John Reddy, 311 Acorn Drive, Aphtomatics. Over the years, I've had a lot of citizens communicate with me that they think a visitor center on the highway would be much more appropriate than one downtown. I've always supported that downtown needs a visitor center, and I agree with that opinion. To me, this is a simple request for resources to help the museum market Aphtomatics. If the council finds out that the amount spent for those resources will not be compensated by additional revenue, then it shouldn't go forward. But if it, if you do think this, this amount, which is a relatively small incremental amount to help tourists, if this investment will pay off in additional meals, lodging, and sales tax, then you should go forward.
Thank you. All right. We'll close the citizen comment period. Ms. Chandler, if you want to say anything? I would suggest that we think about, what Tina suggested, doing a little more homework. I was going to ask if y'all would be willing to come back to a public meeting where we could do a little research to see where these things are working well and see if it actually does provide a flow of, of people from one place to the other. As you said, do our homework, which we should have gone to start with. But would y'all be willing to at least come back and listen to a couple of specialists that might come and speak to this if we set it up? We have already agreed to table this decision tonight. We're not going to take action on it. At least that's what I've thought I heard, because the resolution was, you know. Oh, they have to decide, okay. I apologize, I'm stepping on the, the stage.
And at the same time, I say something that, I visited the museum on Friday. I wasn't going to speak about it publicly. I visited your museum, and I stuck with you. Unfortunately, every interactive exhibit was broke.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. It was not.
Please don't argue.
No, no, you're misrepresenting, you're misrepresenting what you came and saw. There were three monitors that had to be rebooted. There are two audio, there are two audio sticks. And I explained to you then, and I said, I knew I would have to answer to you on this.
Six.
There are, there are 12 monitors in the galleries. We got the program today from Virginia Tech to reboot one stick. There are two audios that have to be rewired completely. I asked Gary today if he knew anyone else to do it outside of somebody coming from Richmond. There are 12 monitors in the galleries. Three of them need to be turned back on. Nathan has replaced five of them in the last three months. Not all of these things were out. You were in the museum for five minutes.
No, I wasn't.
You said, yes, you were, ma'am. You said to me publicly, in front of other visitors, that it would be a shame if the museum closed. You said in the public that you wished the museum wouldn't close.
Mr. Sayer?
And I had to answer the visitors on what you started.
I would like to say that I was in the museum for over an hour. Call me a liar.
We're not going to have this argument, but it's improper, the court, the man.
And many of these things here were broke. And for one in particular was the speech given by Watt Abbot in 1965 that did not work, and there were other monitors that did not work. And I asked you about the monitor, the dial monitors, and what was wrong with them. You said that you didn't have the key pad codes to open them up, that Virginia Tech had those.
No, I did not, ma'am.
You did not say that?
No, I did not.
You did not say that.
Because he at Virginia Tech, I said, we, the thumb drive from Virginia Tech, he said the file on their monitor was corrupted. I got. Excuse me, Ms. Feigle and Mr. Sayer, this is improper, the court, the man. You, you, you're creating an argument situation that doesn't allow him to respond to it. So let's not, let's.
So what I would like to say is.
Ms. Feigle, I would like to ask you to stop your conversation, that you are.
When I have the conversation with him, I'm saying.
You have created a conversation that is improper.
Okay. I would like to say to the council that I would like to see.
Point of order.
Everything corrected.
Ma'am Harvey, I think you did make your statement very clear.
I would like to see everything corrected in the museum.
Let me know when you're pleased.
Ms. Feigle, we've asked you to stop.
Call the mayor?
We're not, it's not up to us to run their organization.
That's true.
All we're doing is, is to see if this does something to help get business to Aphtomatics. That's the reason we looked at this, the reason we agreed and had discussions, to try to help everybody's business. There are more empty buildings on Main Street than there were five years ago. There are more empty buildings in this town than there were 10 years ago. All we're trying to do is help keep the businesses we've got going so we don't get any more empty buildings. And look for ways to promote business, try to keep the ones we've got and add new ones. But of course, if you add a new one, I might sell it, so I guess that's a conflict. But we, you know, ain't nobody supposed to gain from anything that, that, that happens. We've got to help. If one gains, everybody gains. This ain't a thing, I think one work on a highway, it's about a straight up. But they said we'd keep both, so we'll keep both. And we're spending right now a very 20-some dollars a citizen of this town to keep the one on Main Street. We spent $16,000 to get ready for a successful centennial and then, and then bring the whole downtown. This will work, and if it doesn't work, we get, we get the money back. We're not, $15,000, yeah, we might get more water and sewer money back from them and flushing the toilet in our town.
Ma'am? May I say one thing?
Yes.
I tried to speak at the last meeting in Chauvin, and I would like to just say, because all these people are here, there's a real estate principle involved here that I know from my real estate work. I, I served as a real fore, as a real estate broker for 20 years. Commercial real estate is very different from residential real estate. Residential real estate is purchased on feeling and emotion. You want where it feels like home, where mama can cook, where daddy can sit in his easy chair. But commercial real estate is driven by numbers. And one of the things that any of you came to me and said, oh, yeah, I need a piece of, of commercial property to put my business on. The first thing I'm going to do is to find out how visible you need to be. By that, I mean, will your business do better with a high traffic count? Or does it really matter to you? If you're an attorney's office, probably doesn't matter. But if you're a retail business or a restaurant, it means a lot to you. So I've got three lots for you. I've got one on Main Street. I've got one on Confederate. And I've got one on 460 out near the museum. First thing else I'm going to do is call the highway department, and I'm going to ask, what's the traffic count on these three roads? And I'm going to probably hear, these are not precise numbers, but they are close, because I've checked this before, when you talked about this at an earlier date. Main Street's probably got 100, 125 in a 24-hour period. And from my business, I know that for every 100 cars that goes by, I might get 10 people to come into my establishment. And the real estate numbers, I know every, for every, it took me 30 people to talk to, to get one appointment. That's just the, the statistics for the business. So if I find a lot on Confederate, let's say the traffic count's about 1,000 up there. Well, my opportunity for business just went. I might have 100 people. And if I know it takes 10 to get a sale, that's a whole lot better than being on Main Street. But then again, if you go out to 460, I don't think it's quite 10,000, but for the sake of argument, if it was 10,000 cars in a 24-hour period, my numbers were greatly enhanced, then I would get more traffic into my business. No one wants to hurt anybody here in this community. We've got to figure out a way to get the traffic that's out here on 460 in here. This is a very cheap way of doing it, and it's one that we can pull out of if we find out that it doesn't work. All we're going to do, all we can do is put up $23,000, and then if, if all else fails, we got a key off. if else fails, we got a key out. If somebody's got a better idea, I'm all ears. I want to do what's best and what's right for this community. I grew up here, I've lived here all my, most of my life, I've been away for a while, and I love this town. And it hurts me to see that when I came back to town, it's not much different to them than it was when I left here in the early eighties. Not much has changed. And it's like, it's like Steve said, we've got more empty buildings than I've ever seen. And that should concern everybody in this room. If this is not the answer, that's fine, I don't care. But find, let's find the answer that we'll want. And I think you're going off with a lot of misinformation. I don't think anybody in this room said last week that we want to close down the current welcome center. I did not hear that. And I don't know of anybody here that would want to say we're gonna close it. I think you've been fed some misinformation. So let's work together, folks. If you don't like this idea, fine, but let's find one that's gonna work. Because if we don't grow this tax base, your taxes are gonna have to go up. Do I want that? No. I don't want mine to go up any more than you do yours.
Probably.
I've been over time. I'm sorry, but thank you for listening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I, what do you, if I keep the guy in the. I get a building on Ms. Pocket's statement, I think there is a lot of misinformation out there and the only way to keep misinformation from spreading is to be here. Come to the meetings, hear what's said. Don't worry about whatever whoever said, be here, hear with your own ears, make up your own mind. But I will say this, if there is misinformation being given out, we need to stop it. And the only way we'll stop it is if you, the citizens, come to this council and says, that council member said this, then we can iron it out. I don't go for fear mongering because I think that's just another way of trying to control the masses. The government does it all the time. I've not heard the first thing said about any kind of food tax being raised to support this. That was one of the objections I heard, food tax is gonna go up. It's not been mentioned in this council. I've not heard, as Ms. Pocket said, close the center down. It's not been said. We're not trying to replace this center, we're trying to grow this center. And the only way to grow this center is get more people in this town. I raised six children in this town. Well, let me change that, my wife raised them, I was one of them. But those kids are gone. Why? There's nothing here to keep them there. No jobs, no opportunities, and it's gonna be up to us. This council and you citizens is gonna have to grow this and we're gonna have to find a way to grow it together. And with all that said, I'd like to make the motion that we table this matter until another time.
I second. End of further discussion. In all favor, tabling the discussion and any consideration on this matter, please say aye. Although ney. I'm gonna go back to my original request. We are gonna set up a public meeting. We would like all of y'all to come to that. We're gonna try to get some better facts, some better information. We're gonna try to straighten out the misinformation that is out there. I do think that I agree that some information got out there that was not quite accurate. We would like to try to straighten that out. Ms. Shamber has suggested bringing someone from Virginia Tourism here who would be willing to come to a meeting. So when we set that up, we'll make a announcement in paper and I don't know how soon it will happen, but we will let y'all all know when that meeting will be. Maybe we can settle this thing with a little more proper information and a little better support. Thank y'all all for being here and thank you for speaking to, to what you, what your passion is about this. Thank you very much. Going on to, does anybody wanna leave before we go on? I hope y'all want to hear the rest of this, do something you're welcome to. All right, under unfinished business, we have none. A new business item has been tabled to another meeting. I don't believe we have any committee reports, anything from the committee that's been planned or, I mean, what do you go for? Town manager report.
A couple items to, to share with you. The Experience Appomattox Tourism Committee has set the date of Saturday, December seventh, for the Experience the Holidays event. This is a three-year community Christmas kickoff event. It'll be utilizing Portland Festival Park, Abbott Park, Courthouse yard, and the streets for the parade. The event hours are from nine AM to four PM. And the committee has requested that the town waive the rental fee for Abbott Field, which is twenty-five dollars. Is there any objection to waiving that fee?
Yes.
Okay. On Wednesday, we will be opening bids on the last phase of the metal art project. We have approximately three hundred thousand dollars for improvements. The improvements are ten to eleven streetlights that will be installed on Patterson Avenue. There's also three water drainage projects, one at the end of Stevens Street, one on Patterson Street, and one on Patricia Ann Lane. It's our hope if the bids come in low enough, there may be some money left over for a couple housing projects as well. So we'll know more after Wednesday, I hope. We're gonna be kicking off the start of our new comprehensive plan at our August sixth Plan Commission meeting. You guys are welcome to come, the meeting will start at six o'clock. Love to get any thoughts from any of you concerning the comprehensive plan. It is a five-year plan that, that I must say that the town has done a good job in the previous five-year plan. We have hit quite a few of the markers on that plan. So if you have any thoughts about the next five years, town planning, please let me know.
Is staff gonna do this or without? Anybody else?
A great point, Mayor Harvey. Central Virginia, Region Two Thousand, I think it's Central Virginia founders now, are actually contracted to do it. Philip is gonna be the person here on our.
That's sure.
Yes. Again, any feedback on that would be great. And then the last thing, we're gonna be starting the process of getting the zoning maps updated. I know a lot of you have a lot of experience on Appomattox and the zoning stuff. Boy, if you can take a few minutes to look at the zoning map as it is now and make any suggestions that you know something needs to be changed, that would be great. I feel like we have the map in pretty good order, there's a couple more things we need to tweak on it, but I'm hoping to get that off to WW Associates in about thirty days to get those updated. And that's it.
Any questions for Ms. Shamber? All right, that takes us to council concerns. Any other things on pick, mind?
We got two things, Mayor.
Eric?
I spoke to quite a few people around the July Fourth holiday about the fact that we didn't have any kind of events around Appomattox. So I spoke to the Coles and asked them if they would allow the town, if we can have a consensus to plan for the future to host fireworks and events at the high school. I'd like to see Mr. Shamber move forward with working that out with Liberty Baptist Church because I think they've coordinated for so many years, but I'd like to see that we not let that fall by the wayside and we can hold some sort of event where the town pays for the fireworks at the high school. The Coles are willing to allow us to use that as they have for so many years. I'd just like to see a consensus in the town being on board with that so we can not let July Fourth fall by the wayside in Appomattox. And then the other thing that I have is I wanna commend the Public Purchase Department. I was at the town park on Hunter Street the other day and we noticed a couple of issues with the slides that I think it was from a defect in it. They were on the spot really fast and they got there really quick and took care of the problem and it's my understanding that it was covered under warranty. The slide was at issue, so they got those corrected and they did it in a timely fashion. I don't know that they're fixed yet, but, and they're not fixed yet, but they, they got it where it's safe in the public field. I'd like to thank them as proof of that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My favorite jogger has asked me to let the town manager know that the streetlight on Burke Street is down. Burke Street.
He's riding it this week, Eric.
What's that?
He's making, we get there, they ran it this week at night.
Okay.
They're walking ones out to Ethan.
Thank you, Mr. Boys.
Anything else? All right, the motion is seconded for adjournment. All favor adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
All praise, Mayor. Again, thank you, citizens, for being here.